We did.
I wonder if they've been doing it?
How are you doing?
I'm doing good, how are you doing?
Good.
Mr. Clanchard, how you doing?
Yeah. Better days.
Hey, how you doing?
Where's your boss at? Oh, yours does. You in charge?
I'm here to ask. I'm here to provide the information. I'm not a man in charge. I know that because I don't fit in this one because of these things. That's why I got up here.
Okay, okay.
Pretty bad, they were careful, but we don't have anyone there to help you. I'll tell you, you can sit on one bench. Kill those.
Still pretty good. Jay, how you doing, bud? I'm here.
What's up, bro? Doing not too much.
He said he'd come through. He doesn't. He won't be able to tie a wire.
Let allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're gonna do roll call.
Anthony Piper.
Here.
John Barry.
Present.
Richard Berger.
Here.
Herb Evil. Not here. Jean Pachella.
Here.
Bob Morgan.
Here.
Emma Powell.
Here.
Sharon Siker.
All right, next up is public comment. And I'll just remind everybody that you have five minutes for private public comment. Your comments are to be addressed towards council, not to other members of the public. First up, we have John G. Clanchard.
I'm here. I'm John Clanchard. I'm kinda surprised that last meeting, that you enacted a... Whatever you wanna call it, a law or whatever, limiting or... You can't have a trailer in Southmont Borough. Okay? I think it's really, really... It's not fair, it's not right, and there's other trailers still sitting in the borough. If you're going, has somebody gone around and checked them? If I got rid of my stuff... Why is, why would, you know... There was one up on Violet Street. Then I saw one, you're not allowed to sit something overnight in Southmont. There was a construction vehicle, one trailer sitting up on Diamond Boulevard here a couple of weeks ago. Okay? Was that enforced? You know, if you're, you know... I mean, you enacted, you enacted a law for one person in particular because one neighbor doesn't particularly care what the other neighbor's doing. It doesn't like it. So they come down here, and they come down here and they cry, cry and moan, complain, and you turn around and make a law, "Well, you can't do this, you can't do that." Okay? How many storage barns are you allowed to have in your backyard? I think one should be sufficient. I've got a neighbor with two. Why does he have to have two barns? You're only allowed one. Okay? You're not allowed trailers. I mean, I feel like this is, this is Russia. Okay? It's what I feel that I'm, you know... It's terrible. Okay? All I gotta say is, you people are very, very narrow-minded and, you know... They don't wanna work with nobody. It's like, hey, if one neighbor doesn't like what the other one does, we're gonna make the law. We're gonna, we're gonna do it. Or, I know in the past, that what you used to do is, you told the one neighbor, called the zoning officer, and you got the zoning officer involved in it. It used to be like that. I don't think that's right. You people are not fair. It's just like, hey, we don't like it? Too bad.
Anything else coming? John, you're next.
First things first. I'd like to address Mr. Carbonara. Fuck you. Okay? Good, that's the right response. You smile and you shake your head. What did the district attorney say about me saying that word in... Did anybody get any responses about me using that word? Fuck you. Anthony, fuck you for signing the ordinance. Rick, Dick, whatever the fuck your name is, Rick, fuck you. Kevin, fuck you. No, 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 no!
I'm gonna ask you to not use obscene or profane language, please.
You can ask me, and I can tell you no, because the First Amendment protects my right to use any word I choose. Doug, why are you sending your boyfriend's Gestapo with the mental health people to my house? Hmm? Fuck you for that. Sherry, you've called me a bad neighbor how many times? Fuck you. Hey, Bob! I don't like you, so fuck you. That's all I have to say today.
All right. Carrie Wilkowski.
That's me, I just came to watch the Shenanigans.
Larry Cobal.
I just wanted to thank council for making the changes at the intersection of Orchard and Olive. On observation after the changes were made, we have had the police at the intersection. I know of at least three times. And in a matter of fifteen minutes, they have, each time, two motorists pulled over, going right through the stop sign at the top of Olive. My wife mentioned that when you come up Olive Street, there is a speed limit sign, twenty-five, that sits in front of that stop sign. And when you look to the right, oftentimes that speed limit sign blocks the stop sign. So there may be people going up, see the speed limit sign, look away, and then go through the stop sign because they truly haven't seen the stop sign. So one request might be to pull that stop sign up and put it on the other side of Orchard. Where the arrow is to turn left. And that way, the stop sign will be clear for everybody coming up the street. One suggestion. And if you drive up Olive, you'll see that, you know, that the sign is blocking the stop sign. So that may be why people are going through. But encourage the police to continue to be at that intersection because people do ignore signs and go right through. The other request I got last month was to paint stop on the roadway and maybe a line across. That might be another indication to motorists coming up or coming down that there is a stop sign there and they need to stop. So thank you again for making those changes. It's helped, there's a lot of people that stop. And unfortunately, there's still a lot of people that just fly right through that. And I usually hear the police turn on their siren and the people over immediately. They can't be there all the time, I understand that, but I think it is making a difference, so thank you.
All right, Carol Hickman.
I talked with the district attorney last month, and he said that council can establish rules for behavior in the use of language, what's appropriate, what's not appropriate, and what might threaten people or make people feel uncomfortable. And then if the person continues to use that kind of language, you ask him to stop. And if he doesn't stop, then you remove the person from the meeting, and if they will not be removed, then that's when the police should step in. So my question is, is council gonna establish rules for how you behave? Because you should not be... I'm sorry, you should not be... You shouldn't have been told what you were just told. That's offensive and that's not appropriate and not professional. So I would hope that you would seriously consider enacting... I, it seems, I guess in my mind, it seems crazy that we would have to ask for something like that. But enact rules that how people need to behave in a civil manner when they come to a governmental meeting. Because school districts would not put up with this, courts would definitely not put up with that kind of behavior. And you should not have that directed to you, and I shouldn't have to hear it. So, thank you.
Well, I am gonna ask you, I appreciate your comments. I think there's ongoing dialogue between the borough and the district attorney.
Thank you.
It's about the issue. And what I would also ask is, if anybody has... I'll just use word "been offended," maybe that's a broad term, but if you... I'm gonna ask the officer actually to just wait afterwards and just maybe take your name and that sort of thing afterwards, and then we can talk to the district attorney. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, that's everybody we have for public comment. All right. Correspondence received in your packets. I need a motion to approve in September eighteen, twenty-twenty-three minutes.
So moved second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. West Hills Regional Police.
Commissioner Mead, morning. Number one. I had a comment to make about Mr. Cobal's actual thing about the speed limit sign that does present a problem, seeing the stop sign as you come up with Olive Street. So maybe Borough Council could have the street department move that sign. Or if nothing else, put a sign that says "Stop Sign Ahead" with the arrow. So they could switch that sign up, put it to be on the sign further down some. Obviously, I had that on my list. Commissioner Cobal knows the same. So eighty-two calls last month, total of seven-hundred-and-sixty-three since the beginning of the year. Mr. Morgan, Mr. Barry, Commissioner Mead, morning.
Good question. What do you think of painting stop at stop signs?
They have that in Brownstown, and I do like it. I was for that when Mr. Cobal brought it up last month. So you want my opinion? I think it's a good idea.
Okay, and how about putting there like a three-way stop or a four-way stop also?
Theoretically, it is a three-way stop.
No, but there's a, using they have a little sign.
Put that on the bottom to show that to...
I make a motion that we go ahead and proceed and do that at that intersection. What are you, I'm not sure I have a motion. To paint stop with a bar across the stop, and also put these little signs like a three-way stop. Do we want to... Probably. You may want to ask the road foreman whether or not it's timely based upon the time of year or if that's something you can get done with the leaves and everything else, or if that's a spring project. Just a suggestion. I don't really answer to the question, but...
The three-way signs or the four... A lot of them intersection.
I'm sure there's one.
They make a bigger problem. I don't know if they paint the street this time of year.
I like to make the motion that they can paint them when they can paint them. Okay, so we don't have to wait another month, two or three, or five months to do this. If the weather's appropriate, they can paint it, and it's done.
I think if nothing else, at that intersection in particular, since it's all new.
Yeah.
Not that they have to paint stop at every stop sign, but that's a new issue in particular.
But I have seen down in Brownstown, and they say it does work down there.
It does, I mean, normally it does.
So I made that motion.
Is it just for Olive and Orchard, or is it for all?
I'd start with all of the Norwood Street, and then proceed with others after that. The law related to it is in place, so I don't think it's a big deal. Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved in second now. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Who would question?
Why?
I, I would prefer not to. I know you would like to take her comment, but it's kinda out of order.
Gotcha.
Sorry, I'm not trying to be tough, I just wanna keep the meetings sort of in order, so if everyone's kept commenting on everything. I understand, I do. All right, Southmont Voltaire Fire Department.
Yes. Fire Company would like to thank Mike Malbert for the hard work he's done on working with the school district to convene an agreement between the fire company and the school for the use of the field. I signed the papers, so hopefully we're good to go with that. That's a big thing they wanted to thank you for the hard work you've done. The other thing that I got for you is, last month, the fire department, we hosted the Cambridge County Regional Firemen's Association meeting. We had about sixty-seven firemen downstairs. Great turnout. The other thing I got is, the new eight-hundred radios will be coming online here this month. At least start tomorrow. That's correct. So we're waiting for the fire. They have our radios, nine-one-one center has them, they're giving programs. So I hope to get them out. The other thing I got is Trick or Treat up there, we're thirty-first, six to eight. The fire department will be out, of course, for that. And one thing I wanted you guys to make sure you don't forget is, we got a serious roof leak back of our office back there. All it was, was a clog, we gotta put the roof and ceiling or the roof.
All right, we're ending here, it's not the best today. Regarding report within the packet. This will be other stuff resolved yet, regarding the quotes. I think it is. Solicitor's report. So just to piggyback what Mr. Cobal was talking about, that the execution by the fire company was the last sort of element that needed to be done and unresolved. Full soccer field litigation. So with that, I would just request authority to go ahead and discontinue the litigation with the school district. So I have a motion to that.
Is it signed by the school district?
Yes, it was, it was, they signed it first.
Fire company signed it, yes. They changed what we wanted to change.
The issue was the five days, five million dollars. They signed it. Should've signed it. There's a...
I make that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then I will ask for an executive session to discuss the closing guard of request. All right, permission. Nice meeting, brought up about us having some kind of process or procedure concerning residents that say stuff they shouldn't be saying. We should, we should have something in writing of matching. Maybe we can discuss that executive session, there's some legal issues there that I'd wanna discuss with council. Okay.
Permission. With the exception of my report, nothing else to add, unless anybody has questions.
Any questions for Sam? All right, Borough Manager's report.
Nothing unless you guys have questions. I'm gonna do want to point out that I did have some reports of trailers in Borough that he did take care of. There was one at two-seventeen Violet Street, the police had talked to them, they moved that. There was a dumpster on Orchard Street that was removed. And then we had a report of a camper trailer up on lettuce alley that over in the middle have taken care of now. It is a violation, it's too close to the alley. So they're gonna have to move that back to meet the accessory structure.
There was one on Violet also.
On the virtue, oh, okay.
All right, any questions for Amanda? All right, Mayor's report.
I'm gonna combine the mayor's report with the property maintenance, street sidewalk. Herb Evil called me last night, couldn't be here, so he just asked me, I can update there. We, the companies met, and we started looking at some sidewalks that are diserated, repaired, or maybe there are tripping hazards that they can create. Jean and I actually walked where he lived a couple of streets and started collecting some data. Actually, the woman, she was very grateful, she stopped us. She mentioned it, I know the woman actually had a big trip and fell, and she was okay. She brought her glasses and stuff, but she appreciated us looking into this and getting this done. So again, Herb just wants us, but you know, we're working on it, we'll have a better update for the next meeting. I'll be standing next to that.
All right. I have nothing for administration, audit, Sherry.
Nothing, bud.
Budget tax.
We're in the process of budget, we've had a few meetings, we're ready to advertise. Are we getting to advertise today?
No, not me, never.
So so we're just about done with that. The capital improvements or capital approval fund is down. The chain run fund is down, so we're just looking into that. We need to start putting more money into those accounts. And we'll have a meeting in the next month, we'll wait along. We'll wait along in advertising, advertising budget. Whether or not we'll have to entertain an increase or not.
All right, community planning improvements, Richard.
I'm going to contact Chris Allison, who's the county planning office. He was involved in a serious accident. I'll try to... I'll try to set up a theme of the whole because there are alternatives for planning. You know, for putting an application in scope of planning activities. Again, that was our last discussion. You know, what extent do we really want a comprehensive plan or discrete studies? And so while I write all, again, Doug's idea was to do this as a committee of the whole, which is something that we've done previously. And all those who are concerned about this, please show up and you know, we'll have that done before the next council meeting.
All right, emergency management. Greater than one hour. The D P finally approved the, some of the permits so that we could move forward down the North Fork Dam project. There's some odd events that need to be done with that so we can move forward. On the sewer side, the city of Johnstown, Western Water, moving forward, but they have a lot of work to do. The permit has been, the extension has been, Sherry, how long is it?
It's on what?
D P approved the extension of.
Yeah, they gave us a couple more years.
Couple, so two, three more years to finish up projects. So that should affect us then too. But I think we have to write and ask for it. So Mayor Todd or somebody about to write. So we get that extension.
Last time, we didn't want it.
Who just wants?
I know, but we, I think Todd never looked at it. We did not ask for an extension for specific reasons last time. We didn't get one.
I've just talked to Todd about that.
Talking about the sewer, right? Yeah, we did not because we didn't want the language changed on our consent decree. When they got an extension last time, they tried to change the language on the consent decree that we thought was not favorable to the borough. So, so we said we signed an extension. We were ready to go and it worked out okay. So we probably keep the same position.
So we're gonna have it done until the end of the year.
It'd be nice to get some of the data to see if we hit the number.
All right, so that's about it.
All right, Branson, working on an LSA grant for the improvements to the building here. And we have action on that later on the agenda. Insurance, nothing to report. MS four stormwater, Sherry.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report on personnel, police, law. You already talked about property maintenance. Shane, Richard.
We will, with the board's, which is the last chance on me. June Smith has been offered a kind of open-ended contract, you know, tapping that forty-eight hundred dollars to address, pieces of excess, the trees that have been submitted to the borough office. That is the danger trees or need of trimming. And Amanda, have you gone all the way to submit your final list?
No, we're gone this week.
Well, once we get a, that is the under five thousand dollars budget. We'll cut as many as we can. And I'd like the members of the tree commission, tree committee to get a list of the final ones that were removed. We will, this green, then also get issued twenty trees for planting. And that was, you know, she hasn't planted our trees more than we know. A variety of issues where we would, you know, broke and plant tree material. And you know, it's a rough balance to go. I think in another years or less, there should be state force service funding, grant funding to do the tree planning and more comprehensively at, you know, what we want to do and what we can do. And then we might have funded that was part of the, I think the, our department, I don't know. Very, very contramoning on deals for the service. You know, you come into a home and you have, you know, pay applications for that. So I'm waiting till we have some resources to, you know, get a better grip on, you know, condition of our trees and, you know, really get plant. But, you know, as we discussed last time, many of the trees in the borough planted in nineteen-twenty is a better, yeah. Norway maples have about a hundred-year expected life and this kind of requires systematic planning and execution.
Under new business, we need to approve trick-or-treat for October thirty-first from six p.m. to eight p.m.
Make a motion.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
We need an action to approve, to send a letter of support on Senate Bill one ninety-one, House Bill eleven twenty-eight, which would relieve municipalities under twenty-five hundred residents of sub-circus drainage repair costs on state highways.
Make that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
We need to approve Resolution twenty-two-three dash zero seven, which is approval to apply for the LSA grant and the authorized signers. The grant is in the amount of three-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars. And that is for repairs to the interior and roof of this building.
The interior. Is this a matching grant at any time or?
It's full grant. Yes.
I'll make the motion. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Business items, approval of the ratification of payroll, nine nineteen twenty-three through ten sixteen twenty-three.
I make that motion.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Approved payment of bills, nine nineteen twenty-three through ten sixteen twenty-three.
So.
Second. All in favor?
Any opposed?
Motion carries. Approved transfers, nine nineteen twenty-three through ten sixteen twenty-three. I'll make the motion. Second. All in favor?
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Approved treasures report for September twenty-twenty-three.
I make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Any opposed? Motion carries. Accepted tax collectors report for September twenty-twenty-three. Make the motion. We accept it.
Second.
All in favor?
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I need any motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss legal matters regarding the small title.
Aren't that kind of adjourned?
They're not gonna adjourn. There may be action afterwards.
I make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
I wasn't planning on writing something, but I mean, I can't, I can't throw it right though.
So anyway, here's the police officer. What I wanted to mention, because we should write out stop signs, is the one at State Street and Leon Cross. It's not invisible. I mean, I was with my cousin the other day and we were driving down State. I had to say, there's stops on there. I don't see her. So, you know, I always stop.
Is it the one, one state or the one on Leon?
It's on State and Leon crosses.
You come down State or you go down State?
I was, I was doing that track. She was State. And then Leon comes down off the hill.
Yes.
And there's a stop.
It's a odd intersection.
Right.
Your concern is one's up or down.
Where is the?
Maybe you just said that mine's there. That's why we stop. But my cousin didn't even see it. I'm not sure. It was obstructed by three or four. Or what it was. Yeah, because, you know, again, I overheard that gentleman talking about quarter. And all of us, I thought, well, I'm in the same situation. People don't see that stop sign.
If I go up and look, they're small. But you see them here. Back and still.
Okay, thank you. I mean, it's just, that's what I thought of, especially as this is like, this is gonna stop. I have to say, there's a stop.
You just can't turn and ask me questions.
Well, see, I, I'm not, I have, yeah, yeah. And so, you know, I'm.
Yeah, I didn't see any other.
That's why I'm here. I'm curious. Thank you. Have a good day. Oh, I thought they went back there and made that. Okay, well, I would like to go to the front desk and recite it.
You're not gonna stop bitching until they get me to move, are you?
I have to take it home and.
Fucking Christian.
Frame it or something.
Why? Because I have the right to. Because she won't stop. She keeps coming down bitching, pissing and moaning. And I have the right to.
We need to be intimidated by the harassment that I'm having here.
No, you're recording, so.
You're, you're, you're a grown man. She's a good woman.
I mean, you, her words have hurt me more than me saying the word fuck. I can promise you. Russ, your words have hurt me more than me saying the word fuck. Okay? So don't, don't start there, okay? Your words have absolutely hurt me more than me saying the word fuck. Okay? So you wanna, and you're a reporter, okay? You don't wanna, you don't, you seriously wanna sit here and talk about me trying to exercise my first fucking amendment right to fucking redress the government for my fucking grievances? And you really wanna fucking say that to me? And what about Patrick, what about, what about Patrick Ruchinowski who writes fucking articles about people and then when they are found not guilty or charges aren't dismissed, they don't bother printing another article?
You have a right to speak what you speak, but I'm just telling you as a man to man, it's not effective.
I don't fucking care. I don't fucking care. I have the right. That's why I do it. Okay? Oh, yeah, I guess. Yeah, I guess. What they're trying to do, Dad, is they're trying to give me all the tax money. They're trying to set them up for a nineteen eighty-three lawsuit on my civil rights. They're trying to do.
Why don't you in there? Oh, okay. But did I, oh, you're the, come back and say you're going to get it. What's happening?
You don't.
Okay.
If you wanna talk to him off the record, Dan will take the camera outside, but I don't suggest doing that. He lies. Hey ma'am, I apologize for my language, but thanks for coming and speaking what you had to speak.
Well, I didn't say anything. I just.
I know, but.
I'm just curious about all, I mean, how the council works. And I've lived here for almost five years and it's like I, and I've had a problem too. So I decided to come down and see what happens here.
Appreciate you. Yeah, they're far more, like I said to the reporter, that, you know, me using that one word has done no damage whatsoever, but a lot of people using other words have done a lot more damage than anything else.
Here's the difference. So, look, what I was trying to say is, you're an imposing figure. You're, I don't know, probably two-hundred-pound man, right? It's a small woman feeling physically threatened by what you're saying to her.
But I am completely harmless. I don't care what.
It doesn't look like that.
It doesn't. No, 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 no.
And you can't say that she doesn't feel physically threatened and you're.
She can't. She can't say she's physically threatened.
Well, look, I just wanted to go, I just wanted to tell you that, okay, because.
She can whatever, okay? And I, and like I said, we will take, I will take this to court all day, okay? And they will do whatever they're gonna do to me, like they always do, okay? So you know as well as I do, there's no, the only justice in this county is for the rich, okay? You did a great, you did a great job of spinning that story, okay, to make it look like I was the asshole, okay?
I just reported what happened in the meeting. You do not do yourself, you don't do yourself any favors. Your dad today spoke. He spoke well. He got the point across. He got, he got it across.
You know, my point was, fuck you to all those people. So I got my point across too.
Well, like I said, you have to write this, you wanna say, but it's not effective in getting what, in getting what you want. And like I said again, I'll say it one more time because you don't, obviously you don't care, but you're, you have the right to say, you have the right to speak your mind. You have the right to say words that you wanna say. You don't have the right to make someone feel physically threatened.
I can't control how anybody feels, okay? If somebody wants to, you could feel physically threatened right now and there's not a fucking thing I can do about it. Now, if you wanna go and tell Dean West that you feel physically fucking threatened, that camera will prove that I'm not threatening you whatsoever. Okay?
But you don't, you don't recognize.
I do. And I'll die on this sword all day too, because you know what? Seriously, okay? And I, I will absolutely say this all day long, okay? The only person I ever laid my hands on was the man who was fucking my wife and he deserved it, okay? I've never hit a fucking woman. I might bitch, piss and moan and scream, yell and holler, okay? But I am not a violent person.
And what about, what about, well, another thing was that she felt, well, I can't, I can't speak for her.
Felt, right. Again, felt, felt. You gotta prove beyond a reasonable doubt that there was an actual culpable fucking threat. No culpable fucking threat, me calling her a fucking Christian. Not at all. That is my opinion of her, okay? And I can, I can express that all day long, okay? Did I say anything along the lines of I'm going to do this? No, I didn't. However, how many people have went and done things that have affected my rights?
I don't know. How many?
Apparently more than two. Apparently that whole council voted unanimously to outlaw trailers and any truck, any pickup truck, any, any truck capable of hauling heavy load. And if you go by my house, you notice there's no trucks there. There's no trailers there. Am I breaking the law? No, I haven't, okay? But you wanna know what I did? Okay, and you can say I'm not effective, okay? They have been fucking with me for the past thirty fucking years. They've been fucking with my dad longer, okay? It only took me twelve months to really piss them the fuck off. So am I effective? I think so. And I also have five thousand people that think I'm pretty effective that cheer me on, okay? They go, listen, do what you do. Don't stop. The only way they're gonna stop is if you don't stop. So, sorry, man. And I'll, I'll talk to you about this. I will absolutely talk to you like this, but I'm telling you, okay? I don't appreciate, I think it's hypocritical if you're gonna be a reporter, you're gonna go, listen, I have the right to report what I want and I can tell a story however I want, then you should actually fully support me going fuck you to everybody in there. You should, as far as I'm concerned, that should be your editorial opinion on it. And I can't, like you said, you can't, I can't control your opinion, but if you're gonna report, you're gonna be a reporter, you should value that because that is the basis of what you do, is it not? That First Amendment, that you have the right to. to report how you see it, your words, correct?
That wasn't where I came to talk.
I know, I know.
I kinda talked to you, uh, because it, it, it bothers, just, I'm not talking as a journalist right now. I was just talking as an observer. I can't stand by and watch a grown man pick on somebody who, the power, the power imbalance is you're up here, she's down here, right?
No, no, that's not the power imbalance. Do you know why? Do you know why? Because of the people that she gets to come at me also. I'm here on my own, by myself, taking all of the criticism, the abuse and the harassment that I get, okay, over one word, two words, the word fuck and the word cunt, okay? So don't tell me that because she's smaller than me, okay, she has a whole congregation of people that fuck with me and my friends, okay? There are people that had, that are down by her church that are my friends, okay, that she goes after that have nothing to do with this shit, okay? So do, so I feel intimidated by her entire congregation of people, okay? I'm just one person. And guess what? I've lost every fucking battle as far as this goes. I can't have my trailers. I can't park my truck here. My truck's been stolen twice by two different police departments, okay? So absolutely, I, you know who Mark Heimeyer is? That's, that's why I am the way I am. I, I'm not gonna stop. I appreciate you talking to me. I know, appreciate you talking. Can you shake my hand up? We're good. Listen, conversations like this is where things get somewhere. They might not be comfortable, but conversations like this where things get somewhere. I'm gonna, like, I'm gonna listen, I'm gonna take what you said under advisement. I'll think about what you said. I appreciate you talking to me like this. Appreciate you sharing your opinion with me. Just like I, you know, that's, that's like, again, that's how, that's how good dialogue, look, not okay, not every conversation's comfortable. Not every conversation want, not everybody wants to have every conversation, you know? But, you know, I, I appreciate you coming to me.
Even, even, even before I wrote the story last week, I could have came to you and said, look, this isn't gonna reflect well on you.
I know.
But, I mean, I was just in the zone. I was like, I, I.
Good.
I gotta write, but I gotta write.
You inspired me too. I mean, you know, like, that was like, you know what? Okay, fine. You know, they wanna keep coming at me, then I'll just keep doing what I do. Next, I can, I can give you, I can give you a highlight of next month. Next one's gonna be the same one. It's gonna be my same speech. Fuck you, fuck you, fuck you, fuck you. I can't really say it to Gene because I, well, I can't because he beat me in the primary, but I don't know. He hasn't done anything to him. He hasn't really pounded on me yet. But yeah, listen, that's, that's it.
All right, we'll see you later.
Appreciate it, man. Have a good night. Yep. You there?
Going wherever she wants to go eat. It's her birthday, that's what I'm. You know, Thomas?
Like a motorcycle jacket?
Mr. Tom.
How are you?
You, I, I just wanted to talk to you for a minute. You're, you're, we're on, so just so you know. And, and come on up. You know something, man? You made yourself internet famous by being a good guy. Honest to God, you, like, the, the comments I see about Officer Tom's a good guy, okay? Cause you are. Thanks for that, man. I appreciate, I appreciate, I appreciate you being, appreciate you understanding what, what, what it is. So, turning her off now. Everybody that was Officer Dowdell, he's a good, he's a good man. So, yeah, I know, I know. Hey, so that was the Southmont Borough Council meeting for October. I think I got my point across by saying what I needed to say. And what I needed to say was, you know what? Fuck you to some people. So if you like what you see, leave a comment. If you don't like what you see, leave a comment. Maybe I'll publish it, maybe I won't. Pretty frustrating, huh? So, those of you that like, uh, like my, like coverage of meetings and stuff, there you go. There was the October Southmont Borough Council regular meeting. See you next month. Appreciate it. Thanks for stopping by. Like, comment and subscribe.